Good afternoon, welcome to the Wellington Board of Education Policy Committee meeting. It is July twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty five. We are calling the meeting to order at four oh three P M. This afternoon, we are reviewing policies fifty one fifteen, which has to do with student discipline. And twenty four hundred is the evaluation of superintendent. Let's start with the student discipline process and procedures for minor infractions discussion.
Okay, so we have a draft of a new policy here. And we I have met I had my admin meeting today with them. I went through this. It is in full draft mode. We changed just talking about what the policy five one one five and student discipline and then with a kind of sub name of student conduct infractions. It doesn't have to be that. It's just where we were throwing some names out and didn't put a lot of thought into that. So what I did was just Arthur made me really think about that whole concept of how do you have a regulation without a policy? So try to do create a new policy. There needs to be more in this and then a subsection or an addition with a regulation. Okay? So what I did was I took some information from current policy. And then from both handbooks, student handbooks and staff handbooks, pulled them into this document. There I don't necessarily like the order yet, but trying to give you a sense of is this the type of stuff that you're looking for? And would this make sense? So some sort of introduction. It doesn't have to be this. It could be a student conduct in introduction. I'll show you some other parts where the type of thing I'm talking about. I went through all the definitions from the suspension and expulsion policy. There's a whole ton of them. And pull only left the ones that I thought made sense to this. And then also left this piece here that was tied to, you know, what is when they talk about school or school grounds in classroom, what are we really talking about? So it's got those definitions in it. These are word for word from that suspension expulsion policy from the shipment model. Okay? The second part there actions leading to disciplinary action, including removal from class. This is modified. So what I did was I took some of the portion from the suspension expulsion portion. And then where they had that master list of all of the things that they have in there, which I think is going to turn people off, to be quite honest. It's too much is I tried to pull that into a list of the most common things or things that we see that would apply to this. That may or may not lead to suspension or expulsion. But that are the day to day stuff. And then it just says this is not a comprehensive comprehensive list of infractions. Any disruption of the educational process and or danger to person or property may result to disciplinary action. So trying to go from and I'm just going to scroll down for a second to show you. All of this is what is in the expulsion piece and it's in the discipline section. It's just too much. It is in the expulsion piece where I think we should leave it there, but not in this policy. So what I did was pulled it into that quick list. I'm glad to change it if you want, but just sharing what I what I've come up with for a draft. Okay? The procedures governing behavior that causes a serious disruption. This is again from the suspension expulsion policy. It's just shortened some, I think. This portion and then it goes into the same thing for governing removal from class. I think that consistency is important in that because there could be removal from class without a suspension or expulsion. So I thought that belonged here. The last piece that was in this and you can disregard the numbers. I've not read numbered thing. This is all about content. Is the dissemination of the policy. I think there should be something here that basically just says this is going to be in the handbook. You know, the beginning of school year each year and such items may be deemed appropriate. So this would kind of be the beginning of the policy. And I'm glad to see what else you, you know, want to put in here. I still think there might be more. But what I saw from other districts is they don't go to this level. It's in their handbooks alone. I couldn't find anything, anybody where they had that general level. They kept it real high level in the policy. And then in the reg, if there was addition, this is where it would fall. So the reg now, and if you don't mind, can I just go through the whole piece and kind of explain? Does that make sense to you guys?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, I saw Arthur nod his head. So having again some sort of introduction here. It doesn't have to be this. But just saying, you know, the school wide supports in place. There's a process for con, you know, for for conduct when students break that conduct policy. What's it look like? How's it happen? Okay? And I'm just giving you high level real quick. I want to take out all of these things. I don't want them in there. I just I'm showing you for that purpose. Again, go into this is a combination of Hall School, Center School and and Shipman. Is do some level of introduction of student conduct. And that they, you know, students have to follow that. Their responsibility in the process to keep a safe school and a positive learning environment. Again, I don't necessarily like the order here. The possible interventions list, we want to have something in there. And and to be honest, we talked about this today. We were talking about a general overview. School expectations. Then information on conduct and if someone breaks it, what's it look like for referral process and the referral process explained? And then outcomes and interventions and that would be kind of the order of what we were thinking. But I didn't want to move too much until you had a chance to give me some feedback and make sure I'm going in the right direction. So this list of interventions is not comprehensive. It's just some. This is something that we pulled from Hall School. Which is linked to PBIS world, which is something that we use a lot. And it it's just a good resource and it gets into how you handle each thing at different tiers. This would be blended into that possible intervention section here. Okay? There'd be a section on the discipline, you know, outcomes. If it was a launched detention, explain it. A detention, explain it. Expulsion could be short here, but I think it's just meant to show something. And same thing with expulsion or suspension. I honestly think these need to be short because they're in the suspension expulsion policy already. We just want to let them know that when you break it, have some infractions that can lead up to and including expulsion. It's it it is the point zero one percent, but that's the point of it. The referral process of what that, you know, looks like that they can work, you know, this is the staff version of it. And to let people know, like, this is how it happens. Staff fill out an office referral. It's they share the details of an incident. It's done on a Google Drive piece. That they only should have one student's name in that. And I had to talk to admin about that piece because how do you explain what happens? That to me is our background investigation information and not to be shared. The next piece is data collection through Swiss, which both schools will have. And the information, even though it's repetitive. The information from the referral that goes through Google will then be entered into Swiss. This is what they're doing at the middle school. And those majors go into 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 we're trying to make sure that whatever goes into Swiss, which is doesn't happen now is then entered into power school. And the reason for that is twofold. One, it allows that's where you would see rollover from year to year. Without having to enter into Swiss. And that would allow us us a parent to log in and say what infractions are there for my child? And if that's aligned with power school, they could see that. I don't know if they can do that yet, but my assumption is that it can be done. Okay? There needs to be a blurb about data collection for PPTs five oh fours or behavior plan development. We threw something quickly in there, basically just to say, you know, that they're typically not going to go into the system, minors or majors. However, on, you know, certain circumstances, they could be in the we tried to talk about some examples. Quietly refusing to do work and that's just part of data collection that we would just collect that data. But if it was some something significant tipping desks, you know, physical contact. You know, specific bullying things or, you know, using targeted language like the N word. Those could be referrals, even though we're also collecting data. So we don't want to always say that that wouldn't go into the system because there are times where it could. Alright? There's a section that needs to be in here on bus referrals. I don't. This is this section here is from Hall School. I don't particularly like it all, to be honest with you. I I want to come back to expectations in a minute and I'll show you that. But there needs to be some sort of explanation about how referrals are done for the bus and then the process. So what happens? Who writes those up? How does the principal get them? What is the principal's responsibility happen then? And, you know, what are the outcomes? And then those again would be entered into Swiss if it's if it's considered to be something that's, you know, major. Again, high level. The referral writing process, who's responsible for doing it? How do you do it? Some general statements about that process. You know, which is this, I pulled this out of halls. The idea that it's if it's a minor, you know, that there should be interventions. There are major things happen that a teacher or staff member wouldn't have to do any intervention because it's serious. That would not be the expectation, but that if it's something general and minor, they should be trying some things first. It gives you an idea of what could be there. I think this section here, what could happen really should be listed in that whole detention suspensions area, just to spell those out, what that looks like. And then this is the section on what is on the actual Google form. This is what's there. And I confirm they're very similar between the two schools. There was one piece for Hall School that was not there and that was the prior action by a staff member. We would want that information, what they do first, if they had the opportunity to. A list of what behaviors, you know, should be dealt with in the classroom. We want to set that up for our staff members so they can, you know, know those things. And really it says classroom, but it could be anywhere. It we can change that verbiage to in the school. We felt like because we there was a section on this, we also might want to have a section that what would immediately be dealt with go to an administrator. Things like, you know, anything drugs, alcohol, weapon, teachers are not writing, taking the time to write the referral. They're calling the office and meeting the reporting. We wanted to put some information to that and we just talked about today that would be built out. There needs to be a section on parent guardian communication. And that might be built in other sections too, but just what our expectations are that will be built in there. And then this is something that the reason I don't like that whole list of infractions is because what if something happens and it's not on that list? Some can someone say, well, it's not on the list. We would rather say, and this is how PBIS is built. What are our school expectations? If something doesn't fall into that and someone does something that doesn't apply to this, that there's a chance a disciplinary infraction could, you know, be written. Stay in your seat on the bus. If you're not doing that, it could be disciplined. Are we going to write a disciplinary infraction for not returning balls and equipment at the end of recess? No, we're not. That's not the point of this, but it's just to show that what the expectations are. Hall School has a very similar one that I just got today that I would insert here, but I wanted to give you that picture. And then here's all the parts, and this was the kind of the eye opener for me. When they took the Cabe model student handbooks. They really took them word for word and there's or they took policy and had the full policy in. And in my opinion, it's too much. My feeling is this section here should reference policies that you already have for Board of Ed that are specific. Things like video surveillance, a quick blurb. Here's the policy. We're we're making people aware of that. The dress code policy at the elementary school was different in the handbook. The middle school had the exact policy in there. I don't know that you need the entire dress code policy in the in this. What you need is a description. Some specific information and then the policy number. That's my recommendation. And then as we go down, it's the same thing. The dangerous weapons and instruments is actually in the suspension policy now. An expulsion policy, a blurb and the policy number, smoking vaping policy blurb, right? Substance abuse, the one in Hall Schools is significantly longer. Again, short reference the policy. It's it's it exists already. And all the way through, same thing harassment statement, bullying, all of those things where you have any policy that can be tied to discipline. I think it should be a blurb in here with a policy number. So it's a reference. It takes you. It allows you to make sure that you've you have notified people. Because you can see the difference between what was in an elementary one here versus what was in the middle school. Alright? Out of school conduct, there's property and property lockers and equipment. Recording of school activities, leaving school grounds, cheating and plagiarism. Computer internet use, like all of those things have been updated. We could have those student cell phone policy. It's been updated, a blurb and the policy number. Again, drug use, search and seizure, sexual harassment. All of those things I really envision, and again, I'll take your lead on this. Sorry for making you dizzy. A blurb this size. Maybe it's a little bit longer, but something just to say drugs and alcohol and substances are not allowed on school property or in possession of schools and students. Here's our policy number for more details, just something like that. Okay? And then the last thing is all the legal thing, which I copied over from the suspension expulsion. I would actually have to go through this and and talk to the attorney about these to make sure what what's applied. And then the last thing is actually that cave form reporting, which I think has has to be in the handbook in online. Reporting challenging behavior, this can be done by a teacher or or staff member or parent or student. Okay? And then the investigation form, which is not something that it's just to show parents, this is what we do. They don't get a copy of this. And that's really then the response and that's it. So again, high level is policy. Simple, open, to the point. The reg which allows us, if we want to change something and make a modification, you don't have to go to board the board to do it. I could notify you on that. Allow the reg to have an introduction in order of here are our expectations. When their student conduct is broken and there's a referral written, how does the person write a referral? What are the consequences or potential consequences? And then really the policy of, you know, where it goes. And then have that, you know, the specific interventions and consequences. So I'm going to stop there because I just spoke for like twenty minutes straight. I'm looking for feedback, like, is that what you're thinking about as far as trying to create something that is more, it's aligned between schools. It would get into, I think, the areas that we're trying to get. They would basically copy this reg and put this into their handbooks. They would not edit this. So there would be one section in the student handbook that says student student conduct. It would have all this information in it. It would make it, I think, much easier to navigate because it's all in one section. I showed you that student, I think the handbook where it was all over the place. This would be in one section and it would let students know what the expectations were. It would let parents know, you know, how referrals are written, when communication should be done, all of those things. Again, this is rough. But I wanted to make sure that this is what you were thinking.
So it's tough right now to visualize how that's going to look. I mean, we just got the access to it forty five minutes ago. Can I request a paper copy of this?
Oh, yeah.
Like and mark it up and go through it?
Yeah, and I'm going to keep working on it. I didn't have admin until today and I wanted to make sure that I wasn't missing any resources that they were using. That I should be inserting and there was a couple in resources, the expectations from Hall and there was one other thing that was like kind of a layout of of not if this, then that, but it's something like that. If you are, you know, I, you know, yelling out in the cafeteria, here's the potential things that could happen. I'm just as a poor example, but it they have a document that they've used in the past for that. But yeah, I'm I'm glad to give this to you. You I want to keep moving things around and and clean it up now that I have feedback from the admin side of things and I actually have a teacher that was part of it too. But now your feedback, I want to make sure I don't want to do too much work on it without you saying, yeah, well, this is in the right direction for content. It needs to be rearranged and this needs to be spelled out more. That's really what I'm looking for from you.
Okay. Can I have a chance to review that and let you know then?
Yeah, definitely. Okay, it's a you have at least a week before I look at this again.
Okay.
And I can, I'll make sure they're closed tomorrow.
I can stop by Monday.
I will leave. I will leave a copy of it in my door here. I'm not sure if Brendan is in on Monday.
Okay, that's fine.
I like how the admin team organized everything at the beginning. That sounded good to me. It made sense. On one of the lists, it looked like the description for suspension was be after expulsion.
Yeah, it's the the orders nine. It's not right.
That should just get.
Yeah, it yeah, kind of like how we did the order of the policies, five one one four, five one one five, five one one six, five one one seven in order of kind of you know, how our response like, you know, restorative practice, then it was like minor infractions, then it goes to bullying and then it goes to expulsion suspension. It's kind of how this will be written. So yeah, you know, what we can do for interventions and then the level of severity will increase. And we'll put expansion expulsion would be on the bottom. Yes.
Okay. I like the blurb part and then how it connects back to the policy. Is it too much to also add handbook like page information?
What do you mean?
Actually, in the handbook, does that specifically reference certain policies?
So this would become the hand what goes in the handbook. All of so the cave model that they took, to be honest with you. It's there's it's too much. It's so so heavy. I don't know that people really read it. And it still covers you because you're you're putting these items in there. So and that's what I'm trying to say, like, there was a bus infraction section. There's a conduct section. There's a referral section. There's this is going to be one section. So basically the regulation would become what the principals put in their student handbooks.
Okay. Yeah, because they want it to be easy for parents to go from one to the other if they want or need more information. Okay.
Yeah, it's I think it should be aligned so that way.
Yeah, for sure.
We all know, like, the board knows, I know, this is it's the same process all the way through. No one can say, you know, what's the process? It's different at Hall. It just that's cleaning up the, you know, the Swiss data and and how it's transferred in and what goes in.
And I don't remember the part about the restorative stuff, but do you think we have a good explanation of what that program is and the the goals for those things?
The restorative policy?
Yeah.
So that was the one thing that I have not spent a lot of time on yet is that the introduction and that's really a thing I want. I was hoping that you guys are going to be able to look at and give feedback because I think the intro in the restorative practices section. I the opening paragraph is good. It's like the Willing Public Schools believe, well, the Board of Education believes, and it just kind of lays out that, you know, we try and do these things in order. I think this needs the same thing. I'm not sure it's right. Yeah, what's there? I'm not sure that really, and I'll show you, sorry, what I'm what I'm talking about. Like, I'm not really sure this gets to that. There's a student conduct section further down where we're talking about conduct that I might like better. This is okay. I just I think we need a good introduction because and enough information that really this is your pop because this would be your policy, right? And then the regulation is what makes it come to life. But I think this is, you know, I mean, this is really tied to the restorative practices.
Yeah, it is.
That's
Okay.
And Arthur, I guess this is because this is kind of your your thought process and and how we built this out. I want to make sure we have enough in the policy that it feels like it's a policy. And there's enough clear information about, hey, this is just a non negotiable. This shouldn't change without board feedback. And then what's in the, you know, the implementation is that regulation portion. That's I guess that's what I want to make sure there's enough here.
Right? Yeah, that's why I want to take a closer look at it on on paper.
Yeah, this this started out as sixty five pages of all the resources and things I had and I've compared, you know, between center and halls, what they had written and edits and then the staff handbooks and I've tried to whittle down to make it make sense. And also use what was made sense in the expulsion and suspension policy. So there's some overlap, but it's not because it's just not the same policy, right? This is the day to day. Is this introduction clear enough to show that, you know, this is our day to day discipline policy? That's what we're kind of hoping for, I think.
Well, they're definitely need some time for my for my feedback on this.
Yeah. Yeah, and I don't have too many comments on the side. You just know that the beginning is really from the expulsion. You know, I want to remove all of those things because you won't see those. I don't think there's any other comments that were.
So I guess my only the only thing that immediately jumps off the page of me. If you scroll up a little bit to, yeah, to this. So you said this comes from Hall as right now?
No, this is centers.
Okay.
And when they did their PBIS training years ago, we created these and these are what the posters on the hall. And the halls are supposed to be four. And they have a hall school version of this as well and they still have their posters up too. It needs to be revisited. And the idea is that this sets the expectation of what, you know, we want students to be caring, responsible, respectful and what's that look like? This is not everything, right? But like, listen to the adult could be a lot of different things. Follow directions the first time could be a lot of different things. This is here, but it doesn't mean you're going to be, you know, when a student, you know, puts their tray somewhere somewhere else and they're redirected to put, you know, it put it in the right spot. And they do it. That's not something we're writing up. I guess that's the point.
Right, but I guess my my whole point is if you're looking to eliminate another list because it's not comprehensive, which I understand.
Yeah.
I question keeping this list in here because it's also not comprehensive just by, you know, it really can't be. So that's why I'm like, okay, if you want to get rid of the other one. That's fine. I just then don't think this should be in there. Because the other thing about this is there's a lot of general generalities in this that are open. Um, that are open to interpretation depending on who's doing the review. Um, one person's inside voice is not the same as another person's inside voice, so it's. That's my other concern about, like, I get where this comes from and why this exists. I just don't know if it's something you wanna reference in a, in a reg.
Yeah.
It's tough. It's really like, this is, this is my biggest problem with policies. Stuff like this is really, really tough to do.
No, I, I, I agree. I, we, cuz hall schools is similar to center schools, and I just. You don't wanna list, huh, I guess this, I guess the, the clearest why I can say this. Is when you, sorry for making you dizzy. When you just write that. I think you've covered yourself.
Yeah.
We don't have to make a list that's sixty-five things long, leave something off, and then I break a rule, and I don't get written up. Hey, it's not in the policy. It, it's a, you know, if it's a disruption to the educational process or a danger to persons or property, it may result in this, you know, disciplinary action. I don't disagree with you, and I, I also think this is still pretty long. The more we can tighten it up, um. That people are gonna look at it and it's gonna be clear, uh, I don't disagree any. I'm okay taking that out.
Yeah, I mean, I, like I said, I, I definitely want more, more time to look, but that's just something that, that jumped off immediately at me is that there's one list that's. You know, not complete, and there's another list that's probably not complete, you know, but one's staying and one's going.
Yeah.
So. There's probably a way to. Kind of include both of them in a shorter, more concise way.
We wrote someplace in here, um, let me just see if I can put my eyes on it real quick. Um, I think it was in the policy. Nope, it's in the conduct section. In one of the conduct sections, we wrote, um. Basically. It basically says, um. Boy, I wonder where I, I put it. It basically says. What you're getting at, like, it's not, it's, this is not a comprehensive list. Um, we use, um. And I didn't want the PBIS to be listed in there cuz that's a program. And if we ever wanted to get away from it, it doesn't have to be that, but we have school values and school expectations. It's enough just to say it. You don't have to necessarily put it in here, if you know what I mean.
Yeah, right.
That's gonna drive me crazy. I can't find that.
That's fine. I'm sure I'll come across it.
Yeah. Brianna, do you have any thoughts on that? Taking this section out?
Um, I like. Uh, well, I, I like, I, when discussing behavior, I prefer to say what is. Ta- what is expected rather than what not to do, like walk in the halls, not, no running in the halls. Um, so I like, I understand having like the expectations in there, but. I see what Arthur's saying too, because there are of the lists and the specificity of each one, but that. Probably, I mean, I don't know where you have those expectations posted publicly, I'm sure on our website, probably in the handbook, whatever, whatever. I think those.
They definitely go in the handbook. They definitely go in the handbook.
That might be a really good thing to make, um. Like, uh, documents, a handout, like, parent, I would wanna have that on my refrigerator, especially if my school district was gonna shore up. Their discipline policies and make sure that things were all, uh, easy to understand and had a good flow. Um, in the hierarchy of how things go, so to speak. I would want that document like. Laminated on my fridge, so I could go over it with my child and say, remember when you're in the bathroom, this is what. The school poster says, this is what is expected of you, and then let conversations fall from that with my child. Um.
Not necessarily use it in the discipline policy.
Right.
Because it would be in the handbook under student expectations. And then, you know, it's, cuz it's information, that's why we have the posters. It could be a separate thing. You don't necessarily need it in this. This statement here or something like this is enough because it says we have a school su- wide system supports. Um, has been implemented to provide opportunities for all students who achieve social learning, uh.
Yeah.
U- utilizes core values with expectations. That's what I was trying to get at. That statement there says that we have that. Um, and it's across all settings. You know, that, that's not going away, um.
Yeah, I'm just thinking like, my kids were a part of this school system for a super long time, and if I had a question. Or something was going on with my student, I went to the handbook. And I don't think I ever looked up like the official policy. Not to say people don't. But your handbook is like your quick at your fingertips thing, and maybe having a sheet or, I would have loved to have that. Expectation thing on a magnet on my fridge, honestly. Um. So my students saw it a lot at home. It was a part of our family conversation about what was happening at school. This is not what we're talking about right now. This is just coming out of my head because I'm thinking about those expectations and how to. Make it less of a. Bossy authoritative thing, and it needs to be more of a community. Um, how to make our schools a positive learning and community that are comfortable for our students. So it's a group effort. So maybe just as a side note, take it out of this. Find a way to distribute it for parents' use.
Yeah, I think if it's in the handle, could he, it's a, but I think the, we've been talking a lot, admin, about family engagement and family connections.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and trying to do some things different and come up with different ideas.
Yeah.
Maybe some sort of. Something with that, connected to that could be done.
We can think about it.
So is this, or am I on track here? Is this the type of thing you're thinking about? Um. And obviously, if there's something missing, let me know, but I, you know. I don't want this to be a, a sixty-five page thing because of all of the items that are in at the end. I think these things here just need to be shortened up and say, this is. You know, tied to this policy, this is tied to this policy. Making a bomb threat, I mean.
I like how it's looking.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I. I do. I probably think there's. A s- not a simpler way, but. Like I said, I, I, I need to look.
For which part, Arthur?
Just, I mean, kind of for all of it, just, um. Can I think of how to say it? And it, like I said, um, it's tough to. It's tough to judge right now cuz it's so new.
Yeah. It'll be more efficient once it's reordered.
Yeah.
Those paragraphs are kind of in order of. You know, cuz people need to know what a lunch detention is. That, I don't think most people know what happens is, you know, if you sit by yourself in the cafeteria, no. You know, what happens with those things? Could a lunch detention be in a teacher's room with the teacher? Yes, and restorative. That stuff just needs to be explained in here. Um. And I think if we can do that in a concise manner, people are more likely to look at this. They need to know, you know, how referrals are written, what information is, is shared. Like, it's just the information that's in here. It'll be cleaned up.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Cuz I think this is gonna be one that, once we clean this up, this is what we can send out to families to say, hey, what do you have for feedback for us?
That's a good idea.
Yeah, I really like that they would have an opportunity for that. To participate.
Okay. Alright, so I will, um, Arthur, I'll make a copy of this tomorrow morning for you. I'll leave it at my door. If you swing by, I'm, obviously, I'm here tomorrow, but. Um, I'll leave it at my door either way, so if you pop through in Monday when they're open, it'll be in my door.
Okay.
And any feedback you guys have, let me know. I'll, I shared that with you, but as I, I'll make a copy of it. Uh, I don't know if the easiest way is, can I, can I just modify that document so then you're seeing what I'm changing? Are you okay with that?
That works for me.
What do you mean?
Well, so a- as I modify that, you might say, oh, uh, I want this gone, uh, but I've already done that.
Oh, you mean in the Google doc?
Yeah.
Yeah, you're, the revision history is on, right?
Yes, yeah, you can click back, yep.
Yeah, okay.
For sure. It is. Okay, let me close this one then. Alright, you have twenty-four hundred evaluation and superintendent is your other item on here.
Yes, it is.
What's this? So I don't have anything on, on this, dude. Is there something you want me to review on this?
Um, I did. Receive the communication back from the attorney who said that there isn't, um. Anything prohibiting. Uh, publishing of the evaluation components, which I did share with the board.
Yeah.
Via email.
So are these the same changes we made earlier?
Yeah.
Just go through, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, those, they're the same changes we made before. I think the only thing, and Arthur, I think it came from you. The only question I had, and this is where, I don't know if it's policy or not, um. I'm just trying to find the. What, I guess it's, and it's, um. It has to be agreed upon. Process has to be agreed upon. The, the challenge that I didn't was, was unsure, and I didn't like was the, the concept of someone can write something. And, but it would be in the document, I'd have to write an addendum to counter it. And I just don't think that sets a good stage. For, it looks like it's the superintendent versus a board member, and I don't think that's a good thing to do. I think if it's not. The, so someone writes their opinion in it, right? And, and the, goes to the chair and they get all the feedback in. It's the final document that gets published. That's what goes on the website. Um. If it's the opinion of one member, and it's not of others. Should it be on the final document? And. That's where I was stuck, like, if someone just, you know, doesn't like one thing I've done, and they, they write it on there. Um, and nobody else agrees with that, I'm not sure that that made sense to be in there. In the final document.
I wouldn't exclude that. I would, so, I think we had this discussion when we did. Uh, the latest superintendent's evaluation is that, um. It was made known that all the comments would not be anonymized. They would be to the, uh, respondent who, who put them. So, in your example, if it was one board member had one opinion and six had another. That board member is identified, and it's, it's publicized. So. If you feel like someone has an axe to grind, I mean, you can point that out and be like, well, it's only, it's only this board member whose. Whose name will be next to that comment, or, or that review, or that part of the review. Um, that's my counter to that, is that you have, you have an ability to say. I don't agree with this. Six other board members didn't agree with this. Only one board member had this opinion, and that, that this is who it was. And you also, like I said, you, like you said, you also have the chance to do, do the addendum and write your own, your own thing too.
Yeah, which, uh, uh, I get, but it's a. Am I gonna write an addendum against? I just don't think that's, that looks good for the board or the superintendent. And I'm doing that, cuz it's, it's supposed to be a composite of the individual members' opinions. Um, and again, maybe we, that's where we got stuck of what that really meant. Um. But if there's no data to support someone's feelings, and they didn't write any, i- you know, the data in there, and they can say whatever they want. Um, y- you might as well write it on Facebook, I guess, cuz that's what happens there. I, you know what I mean? Like, I don't know.
I see your point. But, so, for example, in my job, I can be. I could be labeled by my boss as. Let's say prickly socially, but all my work, which actually matters, is spot on. So in my review, you know, it could be noted that, uh, I need to be more. Friendly with my emails or whatever the case might be, but at the same time, what determines my continued employment or my. Raise or promotion or relax thereof is based on the work that I do, and that's all factual. So. I don't like the idea. I don't like the idea of excluding someone's, someone's thoughts because they don't agree with the other six. I don't think that sets a good precedent. I think it, I think, I think that's majority silencing the minority. I don't agree with that.
S- so. I don't, I'm not questioning the discussion part of it. I think that could be there, but again, this is the, the thing that I'm referring to. Should not be the sole basis of judgment on appraisal item.
Sure, so that basically, that basic, but that basically means that, um, let's just make it really, really simple, okay? Should, should Phil receive a raise for his work? I'm, I'm just using you cuz you're the current superintendent.
Yeah.
Should Phil receive a raise for his work, um, in the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five's school year? And that's, and, and, and that's a question. And there are, there's one board member who says no. But, that, I mean, not that it doesn't matter, but it doesn't change the other six who say yes, and the yeses go through. It's almost like the vote. You see what I'm saying? Where, it's there, but it's not swaying your opinion.
I'm thinking about opinion, like, if someone says, you know, they didn't like how I handled something, and I followed policy, and it's just the, it's the way it is, and it's. It's like my word versus theirs. I just, I'm not gonna, I think that's poor practice to. Put, like. That's, as I go to apply for another job, right? And someone's put on there, you know, he needs to spend less time on Facebook, putting out budget information. Um, or, you know, and, and, or whatever it may be. That comment is in there, and. It's online now. So anybody can look up and see that. It's not, you know, that's not typical where they're gonna ask for a prior, you know. Something, and, and especially. When it might not be factual. I don't know. I understand you. I, your example, I agree with, like, the, I don't, you know, if it's. Four-three, you know, he shouldn't, should get a raise or shouldn't get a raise. That's not what I'm getting at. It's the, I'm, I'm okay with that stuff. It's that anyone can write whatever they want in the evaluation, um. In the final document that gets published, that information may be there even though. It says Phil Stevens takes UFOs to work every day, um, you know, and is friends with the aliens. I, I, you know. That's where I'm struck. Not that I think somebody will do that, but there's gotta be a protection there that if there's something that is said. That's not factual, they shared the information. And it's not, and it doesn't get put in the final document. That's where, that's the, the one piece that I'm stuck on.
To me, your protection or the superintendent's protection in that case is their response. To me, that's your protection, because you can obviously say, this was levied in my review. There was no supporting documentation. Here's how I feel it went down, or here's how it went down. With supporting documentation, or even without, whatever. But you're, you have the chance to respond. There is, there's ample chance to respond, and if, if there's something so egregious. Then you should respond. I'm not saying you shouldn't, and I think there's a, a bit of responsibility too on the chair. That if it's going to be something so. Off the wall, right? If it's gonna be something, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna base my entire opinion on the superintendent's performance on this one thing that happened. One day, and that's gonna just tank everything. I think there's a bit of responsibility on the chair to say, at least, either talk to the board member or look at it and be like. I can put this in there, but it's, it's not gonna. I don't think that's enough to sway things or that's. To the fun not. Not. I wanted to say bury it, but that's not what I wanna do. Yeah, kind of maybe the chair goes back and asks. The board member, do you have anything to 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 support this? Because you put this out there, but. I didn't see any, you put this in there in your part of the review. I didn't see anything to support this. Any, what are you basing this on?
Yeah, and I guess that's that I I'll agree with that. I mean, if there's no data to support it and the chair has the ability to say, look, if there's no data to support that, I don't. That shouldn't be in there. I'm totally good with that. That was, I I. Just didn't get that feeling last time that it was anything that was written. That it's gonna show up in there, whether it was, you know, off. Out of left field or not. Um, or supported by data or not. I think that's the piece that. The data is the important part. If someone has data to show that I didn't do something. Um, either according to policy or didn't handle something properly, it should be in my evaluation, right? And I might you. I might do an addendum then to explain more. I might not. It might just be like, you know what? You're right. It's the piece where they don't have the data. Um, and it's just. Inaccurate.
I don't disagree with you there. I but I I also don't want to. I don't wanna silence opinions at the same time. I mean, I understand that. They need to be based on facts, but people are still going to have opinions. Outside of the fact and I I it shouldn't be. Shouldn't be the entire basis of anyone's evaluation for sure. But I don't think it shouldn't be a piece of it. So that's why I'm saying if it's so. If it's so egregious that. You know, everyone's looking at me, wait, when did this happen and how did and and why and when? Like, if you're asking yourself, if you read that. And say, whoa, wait, when did this happen? And there's nothing to support that, then I think that needs to be addressed and probably. I would say by the chair, who's who's reviewing the the review, basically. That's my. That's my part of it.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I mean, it's our job is to be factual. When. Doing the evaluation, everything should be based on data. Like straight fact. So nothing should be in there. That doesn't. Isn't backed up. But yes, as the chair, that's part of the job is to, you know, go through everything. Um, certainly not censor or change things that people say. I've I've been careful about that for sure, just, you know, obviously. But yeah, to ask for the backup, that makes sense. I keep thinking one of the um. One of the requirements on the state's superintendent evaluation has to do with delegating responsibility. And so a superintendent could fail that because. They give a whole lot of responsibility or tasks to one particular staff member and then. Like an easier one to maybe a staff member they sometimes get coffee with. Or they could fail it because they don't delegate enough. And those are two very different things. So if it just says. Fails to delegate responsibly. You do need that background information so you know, like, what what is the complaint?
Right, and then and I guess that's, isn't that our dialogue, right? So. I'm gonna give you the the teacher evaluation process. So when I go into um. And I don't go into as a principal, I would go into observe a lesson. It'd be an informal observation, so I wouldn't have. Much background knowledge about what I was walking into. I would watch the lesson and I'd be scratching my head going, what in the world is going on with this grouping? Why is it this way? Um, and then I'd have the post observation feedback and I'd meet with that teacher and say, why in the world did you group students that way? And they, if they didn't have an answer, I'd say, you need to think about that next time because I think this grouping was inappropriate. Here's why. But they also might say. Here's why I grouped it this way because they've been working on this particular skill. I could get over to that group and work on that skill with them. And while I could push the others and extend learning on on this group over here, I might not have that information until I have the conversation. So the initial feedback, you know, the initial document that comes to me, my first opportunity to share that type of information. Is at my, you know, with you is at. In the executive session. And if I share information with you, that gives you reason why. I would hope the person would wanna say, oh, I don't want that in the evaluation, and that would be. Would be taken out, and it's not that you have to. Finalize my evaluation that night. It should just be clear that the board chair would then make some adjustments. Um, based upon the information I have, and maybe I don't have enough information to say, you know what? We still feel that way. That's fair. A- again, it's just that protection. I think I think we're in agreement on that. As long as the board chair. You know, board chair does it, I think that's that's fine.
So then, hold on, let me give you. Let me use that same example, not not the classroom example. Let me use the delegate responsibilities example. So. You can have, and I I can, I'll almost guarantee this would happen in with our constitution of the board that. You could have two people who feel the superintendent doesn't delegate enough. And one person feels that's a good thing. Because of how hardworking they are, and one person think that's thinks that's a bad thing because it's taking away their other from their other duties. And you're probably never gonna get them to to agree to anything.
Sure.
So what I don't wanna see is. One of those. Opinions be removed on the same factual basis because both people agree in this case. The superintendent doesn't delegate enough responsibility. But one's good and one's bad. I wouldn't wanna see either disappear.
Well, there's a place, yeah, there's a place for. Notes and comments to where the person could say, like, this is why I think that.
Yeah. And that's what I'm saying. What I'm what I'm saying is to to. To to Phil's concern is that. The person would have to say, you know, I I've worked with people who don't delegate responsibility and. It seems to be taking away from this, this and this. And then the other person says, well. They're very hardworking. They're getting all these things done and not putting any extra stress on the staff, and there's two. There's one fact, there's two opinions, there's two. Pieces of data to back up both of those opinions.
Perfect. I'm I'm cool with that. As long as they have data to back it up, I'm I'm and and that's something we should have a conversation about, right? Anything there that someone feels they have data to support what they're saying. And that it's objective, I'm a hundred percent on board with that. And I, your example's perfect. It's spot on because. Depending on what someone's, you know, what they're using for data, it could show one thing or the other. And it sparks a conversation about, okay, how do we move forward? What should we continue to do? I'm okay with that stuff. It's where someone doesn't have data that they can put something in and just say. You know what? You know, Phil's been unprofessional and these three things. Uh, and it's just what I feel about him. It's it's, you know, but there's nothing to back up. It's just. Yeah. I'm. I guess so as long as the, which it's in there, right? I guess where I would call the board on it. Um, where I would say in my evaluation, if someone, if you're gonna write something in my evaluation. That is totally not founded on data, which is in our policy. I'm gonna. Say that in executive session and say, this is not founded on data. There's no backup to it. It's just a statement. And if you're going to pu- push that out. Then, you know, I don't believe that's fair because it's gotta be based upon data. If someone says I have the data and they share it. Uh, you know, I think that's that's what I'm asking for. I think we're on the same page of that. As as, you know, I just. That. Including data piece is important and and not. Just saying. I don't like Phil because he wears red shirts and. You know. Whatever it is. I don't like.
Do you want? An extra week to review? Do you wanna make it a two week thing instead of a one week thing?
You know what? A- as I was thinking about that, it's 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 the conversation with the board. I'm okay with the week. But there's nothing in the policy that says you have to finalize my evaluation that night. What I think would make sense is that. And I would hope anybody would do this, whether it's in in writing or not, is that when you bring the evaluation, the evaluation is sent to me. May not be considered final until we go through the executive session process. And discuss the evaluation. And then. I would think ninety nine percent of the time, it's gonna be like, yep, all good. Let's sign off on it. Um, or. There might be something that comes up that says, you know what? I'm gonna make the changes. I'm gonna send it back out to the board. Show them the changes and if all if they agree all on that, then. We'll send it to you and that that'll be your final evaluation. It doesn't have to happen that night, if that makes sense. It's the conversation has to happen that night. Because the week gives me enough time to bring in other information. Um, if someone feels like they have data, you might not change it. If I bring in my data and I say, here's what I I'm bringing. You may decide, you know what? We wanna remove that item.
So if after speaking with you, the board member wants to alter their statement. They have the opportunity to edit it, but are not required to.
Correct. I think you have the opportunity. To. Take it back after that night. And. Make an adjustment and then just send it to me, but you would agree as a board, like, hey. Um, now that we've heard that, we believe that. You know, we should be adjusting this comment or adjusting this item. And. Hopefully it's not worse, but it could be worse depending on what I shared. Like, holy cow, it's worse than we thought, or it's better than we thought. You could make that change. There's nothing in your policy that that stops you from doing that.
But only the person who. Stated it. Could decide that.
I think, or the board chair.
Yeah, that's where that's where I'm struggling too. I think I understand what Brianna is saying. Uh, I think that instead of. Instead of saying the. The person or the board chair can remove it. I think it needs to be one of those things where the person can opt to remove it or modify it, or there could be a vote outside of executive session. To modify it and see, get the entire board's opinion. I don't, I don't like. I don't like that unilateral control to the chair. I know that I I said that the chair should be able to review and to and to call. Members out of it. I I didn't say they should be able to pull comments.
Yeah. I'm, I only believe that if they had no data. I think a board chair should be able, if someone has no data, they're not sharing any data. I I don't, I think they should have the right to do that, but if they sup- provide provide data. I think it should be, should be there. Um, and again, I agree with you, Arthur. It should be, if you're gonna remove something. It doesn't mean you're not gonna have the conversation about it. Right? It could, it could be that it's just, it's it's pulled out.
I don't like the saying remove things. It's more like. It's an edit for the. Board member. Based on new information or clarifying information. Like if somebody writes something and I don't agree with it, I'm not taking it out of there. I'm not removing it. Because that's not my job.
Right.
And I participate, the chair participates too. So. Everybody's voice has to be equal. If I wrote something. And then upon discussion, found out that actually. You did do these things and here's your evidence right here. I would feel. Like a. Ding dong, putting it in your, it looks bad for me. It looks bad for our board because it's like, I don't know what I'm talking about. So if I wrote something, you had evidence to back it up and show me that what I said was inaccurate. I definitely would wanna change what I was saying. Because now I have new information. And. I need to be in the know.
And that's that's on the board chair, right? To get to make sure, you would want that data in there. Prior to.
That's, okay, now you're confusing me, Brianna. So when you say you, do you mean you as a board member or you as the chair?
Me as a board member, working on this task.
Okay, so. You, you ju- you just said you're uncomfortable with the word remove. So I was thinking you wanted to change that to be some sort of editing process, but then. You said if you brought something up and there was evidence to the contrary. You'd wanna be able to take that out, which is removing it. So I.
Okay.
Do you, do you wanna have that ability or do you wanna edit it?
No, I mean, change it. Yeah, edit it.
Okay.
Right.
But what if, what if it's completely wrong and you do wanna pull it?
I would want the chair and the, I would ask the chair if I could please amend my entire. Statement or even like redo that whole section.
Okay.
And. Like if, uh, that would be on me, Brianna, the board member. If I wanted to change it, I would really want that. I would want the opportunity. I wouldn't expect somebody else to do it for me and I would be. Not very happy if they told me I couldn't. But also I don't want somebody to tell me I have to, you know, I'm just.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. Yep.
The other thing is when we think about. Um, Phil. Doing a addendum. That to me looks like a piece of paper at the back end. It would. Make more sense to me if it could be a paragraph slid into the document next to. The statement that. He. Disagrees with.
Where's that?
And I don't know if that's what you all are envisioning or if it says that anywhere. That's just. Something that's bugging.
No, but. But I think that's fine. I have no problem with that.
Where's that? Uh, what do you think about that? Is that clarify what we're we just said? Without, it's not about removal. Finally, the exec- is that session with a superintendent, a board member may choose to modify their. Evaluation feedback for um.
Based upon.
Uh, prior. Well. I'm just trying to keep it simple prior to. Um, final copy being published.
Do we wanna put a timeline on that?
I think that night, right?
Well, no, Brianna, you mean. After the meeting, right?
Yeah.
Give the edit, right?
Right, so when we do the executive session, the board member wants to edit it. You can't have forever because we need to get this signed by July.
Oh, you just send it back out and. Give them. A week. Business week, I don't know, five days, whatever.
Right. So now we're backing up to when we do this, start this process. Like it would be smart, you know what I mean, to start even sooner than we did this time, for sure.
But you would know that, right? I think you'd know when the board chair gets the comments and you see the evaluation comments and they're like, ooh. This comment has no feedback in it, or this is gonna be something that. May the superintendent may bring additional data. You just spoke it earlier. Does that, is that clear with what I wrote?
Yes.
That's, this is not, it's not the right spot. Let me see the session.
If something looks unfounded, you still want the chair to talk to the board member first.
Yeah, but that's, so I think that should go in number eight. That should be a little extra line in number eight.
And then if that's, if it's still. Sticky, then it goes to the. Yeah. Which I, we also. Can we talk about doing the executive session for the superintendent evaluation as its own standing meeting?
It's already in there.
Okay. Totally by itself?
Yeah.
Like not part of a regular meeting.
Even let me just find out where it was. Well, maybe it's down here.
It didn't used to be. Oh, that's where that.
Yeah.
This new thing needs to go.
You want me to move that down?
Well, it kinda goes together with what we're talking about.
Talking about number ten?
Yeah, but I like it in the list of. Like timeline too.
You wanna put it down there too.
No, I don't think, I don't.
Doesn't need to be.
No, because I think that in the addendum addresses something different. Because I think that this addresses the executive session. And then the superintendent's addendum is something even separate from that.
Yeah. Okay.
Sorry, what were you saying for me to add to number eight?
Sorry, I just might.
The meeting by itself is what I was looking for.
Oh, no, number eight is, um, sorry. So number eight deals. So number eight deals with the. The rationale and the the data and all that. And comments section should be used for supportive data. You can add. Did an opinion. Have no supporting data, the chair can address with. The responding board member and ask to add data or something along those lines.
The chair may ask for further clarification and supportive data.
Yeah, exactly.
You want to, you you want me to write what you just said?
I think, yeah.
Yeah, that, yeah, Brianna, that would be actually perfect.
Say it again, the ch- the chair may ask a board member to.
Clarify and provide profi- uh. Um, additional. Information or additional data. To support the claim, really.
Do you wanna say prior to the meeting?
Yes. Yeah, because that, that's like the first line, right, is. I, the, the chair, let's do it that way. The chair gathers all of the information, so that person is kinda like the first editor. First, not editor, the first go-around.
I don't think you need to put prior to the meeting because it's kinda known that we review this all prior to the meeting.
Like if somebody wrote something and it had. Grammatical issues or the sentence itself wasn't clear, then. As a board member, I would. Expect my chair to say, hey, you wrote this thing. It doesn't even make any sense. Do you wanna look at it again? It's kind of similar. And then they can edit after the executive session if they choose, if they so choose to. Or, okay.
You want me to scroll through this again?
Actually, go back to that sentence. I I think I have a change for that, so.
Which one are you looking at? The draft?
Ten. I had it, now it's gone. No, okay, I lost it. Anyway, sorry.
I'll think of it.
Probably. Yeah, so actually it might be in two right there. Evaluation should be at a scheduled time and place with no other items on the agenda or any study or executive session with all board members present. So. That, that line allows it to be. Part of an uh, other meeting in executive session. You could change that. To say. You could ha- have it say with no other items on the agenda and in an executive session with all board members present if possible, where it's. Making clear that it's, it's basically its own thing and it's still in executive session, obviously. Do that, or you could just spell it out completely different in another line somewhere.
What are you trying to get at? I missed that part.
So, number, so what Brianna's saying is we wanna make it an individual, it's, we wanna make this thing its own meeting, which I wholeheartedly agree with. But the way two is structured. Evaluation should be at a scheduled time and place with no other items on the agenda, which is currently not. But the next line, add a study or executive session with all board members present. Kind of allows it to be added on to another meeting in an, in executive session. So if you remove the. Um, if you remove the, add a study or if you get, I mean, I don't know if we do studies, but. And just make that an and, that would kind of mandate that it's its own thing. Or you could do that too. I mean, that's, that's fine. You could also put it in five too, because five says the evaluation should be at least once a year and then you could put. Uh, as a spec- should be a special meeting at least once a year.
Trying to, to listen and type at the same time.
Yeah, right.
Did this, did this, uh, clarify what you were trying to get at with your and set? Special time and place and with no other items uh, on the agenda. You want this to be and with, right? And?
No, 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 not there, um. If you get rid of the, or add to, add a study. Or executive session, like I don't know if we do studies anymore. I don't know if that needs to be in there, but.
I don't think it does.
I would just change the or to and in that case, and in executive session.
I study or. How about we just take out that, or start to take that out and just say and? In executive session.
Yeah, that's what I was going for too. Unless you, I just know if you wanted to keep in a study in for some reason or add a study in.
Is that, I'm just, I haven't read it yet, so I'm just trying to.
Within executive session?
What's that?
Within?
Within would be.
With no other items on the agenda. So it also doesn't have to be in executive session. I can request it not be in executive session.
Yeah, but. At the same time, we could still have our part of it.
True.
Absent of you in executive session. We should actually, because it's a contract negotiation, so.
Meeting in a scheduled time and place with no other items on the agenda.
I would just put and, and in.
And in. Doesn't even want the and, they can just say in. With all, with no other items on the agenda, in an executive session. Doesn't matter to me. Grammarly. It's being picky.
Either way.
It's fine by me. I'm, I'm okay with that. The evaluation should be discussion strengths, weaknesses, yes. Yeah, I'm good with this.
I think it's okay. Um, the only thing I'm saying is because of what you just said, if you wanna add. Up to back where we were in number two, if you wanna add. Um, unless requested otherwise by the superintendent, because if you can request it not be in executive session, I mean. We can, we can do that when we pull you in, we can make it public. But our thing should be. In executive session. First. So I don't know if you wanna throw that in there or if it's just something that's known.
The, I think this impossible thing is actually. Might.
Cover it?
Yeah, might give you the out. You know, the thing that we were talking about before, um, was the addendum piece. Where was that?
It was down, down lower. Um, so.
Uh, and.
Yeah, you mentioned there.
No, it's not and, and addendum. Someone's written, will be posted. On the publishing signatures of the evaluation, the document. Oh, it isn't and addendum. Posted, yeah, okay. Is it up, is there something up here too that had the addendum in it?
Yeah, um. You have. Hang on, go, go down. I just saw it go, maybe it's down. Yeah, right there. Superintendent should have the opportunity to evaluate the board, ideally the evaluation, when including examples of the working relationship with the board, the superintendent. You can add to that if you want and make it specific to the evaluation.
I'm thinking about the addendum though. Brianna, what you were saying, if I was gonna, instead of a document at the end. I would have the ability in that section to write an addendum piece. So it's tied directly to it and it's not like a separate piece. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, and I think. That would be something the chair could do is slide in your paragraph underneath the comments section that it goes with.
Yeah, it's interesting. That's the only spot the addendum comes up, huh? Am I missing something?
I don't think so. Cause that other thing is about you evaluating us.
I think we put the addendum in there as a. In order to do this.
Section, yeah. Okay, so.
I'd put it in that paragraph.
Yeah, is it, is this one here in yellow?
No, I'd put your, so. Right below ten is what the superintendent has the ability to do. So I would say you have the ability to evaluate the board and the ability to. I don't know if you wanna say. Uh, if you wanna say write an addendum, or if you, if we're gonna do it. You know, with specific responses to areas, the superintendent has the ability to respond to. Sections. And will provide that feedback to the chair to be added to the evaluation. Again, within a week of the. Of the executive session.
Yeah, it kinda goes with number ten. Because that's what happens after we meet. And the part about the superintendent evaluating the board, I mean. I kinda wanna ask like, why is that even in here?
I think it's just part of the, when they talk about superintendent evaluation, they always talk about that as well. I, I, I know, I hear you, but. It's pretty common.
Well, yeah.
Exactly, provided to the chair within one week of the. Meeting. And.
And added to the evaluation.
You wanna say something specific about where it goes?
In the specific.
What are those things called?
Standards.
They have a word. I think it's. But yeah, that's basically what it means. And really, that should never become a he said. He said situation because it should be backed up by fact either way.
Okay, agreed, yeah.
You know? Especially if it's been through the conversation with everyone.
You can still have a situation where the response, you, you can still have a situation where people have facts and the responses isn't gonna be good enough.
Yeah.
It does exist.
This is written in the feedback, we provide to the chair within one week after the special meeting and add it to the evaluation in specific standards or categories se- section.
I like that part a lot better than imagining this piece of paper tacked on the back, whatever, like. That makes a big difference to me, anyway.
I'm good with that.
Okay, so what's next step on this one? I'm gonna wanna see it like all put together.
It's gonna ask, go to the board.
Right. Oh, we haven't even done first yet. Okay.
Just been committee. Full board. You know what I'm gonna do before you, uh, before I send it, just because there's a lot of edits in there? Uh, it's actually, let me clean it up. I'll send it to you and just give me the nod, like, yeah, send it to the full board and I'll make sure it's on the agenda for August.
Okay.
Cause I, I like to proofread and just make sure there's nothing in there that's, as we're working and trying to get things in there. To full board. August. Okay. I think that's all that's on the agenda for today.
We have future policy review. Which has been pushed, but that's because we had big things to talk about.
Yep.
So next time we're looking at things that have to do with field trips, health and wellness. Social media for students and then the use of private vehicles by district employees. Those are the things that are coming up. If anyone watching the recording is interested in catching, catching us talking about those certain things and. Um, of course, email your feedback. All right.
But your next meeting will still be your discipline stuff. You're gonna have to have another.
Oh, yeah, we'll have to add that too.
Yeah, for sure.
That's where we're heading.
Perfect.
Okay, anything else?
Five thirty, you gonna stay on for a second afterwards, Brianna, to talk agenda?
Yeah, I can.
All right, perfect.
All right, we're adjourning at five thirty PM. Thank you, everyone. Thanks, Arthur. Take care.